All right, we are live. I'd like to call our Monday, April 20th, 20 meeting of the Falls Church City Council to order. We're delighted to have you all here virtually for our third virtual city council meeting, done, obviously because of the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to state law. Our discussion tonight will once again be limited to matters relating to the emergency and the continuity of government, although it is likely the General Assembly will in the near future broaden the scope of what we can discuss at virtual meetings. So I think everyone should stay tuned on that. But for purposes of tonight's meeting, we are going to be speaking about the coronavirus, an update on what's going on, and continuity of government and budget issues. So, Madam Clerk, will you call roll and make whatever statement is necessary under state law?
Yes. This work session is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and City Ordinance Number 2006, adopted by the city council on April 6, 2020. All participating members of city council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting on the city's website or on Falls Church Cable Television, Cox 11, R C N Channel 2, and Verizon Channel 35. And work sessions are conducted to allow council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. Because this is a work session meeting, public comment will not be presented at the meeting, but public participation is always welcome by submitting comments to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. That's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. All comments are provided to the members of council right away, but consistent with the city council's rules for work sessions, will be made part of the record of the next regular meeting. And so now I'm going to do the roll call. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Tarter?
Here.
Thank you so much, council.
All right, thank you very much. And although it may not be as visible, the work of government goes on, and the city staff has been quite active as our city council with a number of matters. And so tonight, we're going to hear some briefings and updates, and some preliminary discussion about our budget. And so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the city manager and let him begin the presentations, and we are welcome to make comments or have questions as it goes on, but I'd like to do it in an orderly process. And I would also ask for my council colleagues and everyone on this call to mute your microphone if you're not speaking to avoid technical issues. So, Mr. Shields, whose birthday it is today, I wish you a happy birthday, and I thank you and city staff for all the good work you're doing to keep government moving and to keep folks safe. We all greatly appreciate it. So, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council. So, we'll try to cover a lot of ground tonight, and as the mayor just stated, our government is closed physically, but there's a lot of work going on and a lot of innovation that's going on. And we want to report that out. We know, you know, council's been involved in so many of the initiatives that we'll be talking about tonight, that I know that there'll be a lot of comment and discussion on them. And just kind of one general note, I'll say also that as big of a challenge as this is, and it is really daunting, it has also been really inspiring to see all of the creative thinking and the problem solving that's been happening here in the city, but also regionally and, you know, across the country. And so a couple of things that I'll report on first, a lot of work is happening at the regional, state, and federal level, and we'll try to touch on just a couple of the key things. We are beginning our process of trying to think about what happens after Governor Northam, he will issue future executive orders with respect to the closing of businesses and the mandatory stay-at-home order. The order that impacts our business community most directly was extended by two weeks by the governor last Wednesday. And so the date in which Executive Order 53, which closes nonessential businesses and lays out kind of the rules under which our private sector or business communities operating, those expire on May 8. And so the big question is, what happens after that? And then, of course, the mandatory stay-at-home order expires on June 10. So the advanced planning for that is underway, and we are pushing our state government to provide a bit more guidance than we're getting right now. And we're doing that through our calls with the governor, through the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and through our partnership with COG. A couple of concepts that I think people should begin socializing and thinking about about how that would work here. We do have the White House's plan for reopening. Johns Hopkins University has published plans. There are many of them out there, and they all hit pretty similar themes. The themes are that certain criteria have to be satisfied before we start reopening the economy. And when we do reopen, we'll do so cautiously and in phases. And in Northern Virginia, we have a specific concern that the Commonwealth of Virginia reopen in a coordinated manner with Washington, D.C., and Maryland, as Virginia's overall progress through, you know, through the different phases of this pandemic are on slightly different time schedules than D.C.'s and Maryland's. And so we've been communicating that to the governor, and COG is going to issue a statement on this tomorrow. But some of the things that we're looking at, some of the criteria that need to be satisfied before we begin relaxing the current strictures that are in place. So one that's fairly easy to kind of understand would be 14 days of consecutive decline in cases. And those cases are published every day. The Virginia Department of Health is tracking those cases. When Nancy Vincent Presents will show some of her local numbers. And so that's something that you can kind of understand fairly easily. The two other criteria that are more complex, one is ensuring that our hospital or medical community has the capacity to quickly surge up with cases, should there be an increase in cases, without resorting to a crisis level of care, meaning that normal standards of care can't be held to, and they have to have a crisis level of care. Another criteria is widespread testing, and that's something that, as a nation, we've been struggling with. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, I think we're in the, about 55,000 tests have been administered, which is about a tenth of 1% of the population. A very low level of testing is happening right now. That needs to ramp up significantly and quickly. And we know a lot of really smart people are working on that, and we think we're going to make a lot of progress on that in the coming days and weeks, but we're certainly not there today. And then, an additional piece is having a very robust capacity in our public health system for contact tracing. And this is something that we think local governments will have an important role in, as well as potentially with testing. And we need to prepare for that now. And so, again, that's a large part of our work with the state government, is to have these timelines better understood, and understand the roles and responsibilities that local governments will have, private sector will have, the medical community will have, in order to open, begin the Phase 1 openings safely. One way to think about this whole challenge that we have is that with the social distancing measures, we have, obviously, essentially stopped the economy in many significant ways. Congress has, to date, approved over $2 trillion in relief to help with that, and the Federal Reserve has opened up another $4 trillion of credit. So a $6 trillion of credit has been extended to try to soften the blow of these strictures in the form of relief. And so one way to think about this is, we cannot waste that incredible investment by having an ineffective reopening. We need to have an opening that will keep our cases, keep our population healthy as the economy begins to open up. So I think, to summarize, we've got a ways to go, I think, in terms of working with the region to do this effectively, and we think it's going to be a big focus over the coming weeks to get ourselves prepared for it and to help the business community do that safely. I'll transition now to our discussions on federal and state funding status. What we are informed is that the federal, the Congress is on the verge of passing what has been described as the CARES Act Version 3.5, the last, the big one that provided the Paycheck Protection Program and other significant relief totaling over $2 trillion was Phase 3 of the CARES Act. They're not calling this Phase 4 because there are important things left out of it. So what 3.5 will do is provide additional funding for hospitals, and will provide additional funding for the private sector, and it will be targeted for smaller businesses in this version with additional funding. But there is not, in the current bill that's before Congress, additional funding for state or local governments. And we are told in conversations today with our congressional delegation that that may be forthcoming in mid-May, but it will not be in the bill that's under consideration by Congress this week. And so one of the things that we are working on, the Commonwealth of Virginia was provided $3.5 billion in the Phase 3 CARES Act. We are told that approximately $1 billion of that $3.5 billion is targeted for local governments. The Treasury Department rules for the dispersment of that $1 billion is to compensate or to cover the costs that local governments are incurring specifically to combat the virus and, you know, for COVID-19 response. It is not designated currently, it is generally believed, although the rules have not been yet published by the Treasury Department, to cover revenue shortfalls. We are working with Congress and with our state folks to try to give as much flexibility to local governments as possible to help us with all of our needs at the local government. And I think there's two big points that we're making. One is that local government is by far the biggest employer in the country, and it's the biggest employer in the Commonwealth of Virginia, when you include schools and all the other functions of general local government. And second, local government employs our public health officials, our emergency responders, our EMTs, our law enforcement. We are the first responders, and so the most effective dollar, we would argue, is money that, in terms of combating this pandemic and its impacts on society, is investment in local government. So we're still making that case, and the status of the billion dollars that has already been allocated to the Commonwealth of Virginia has yet to be fully determined. But just as, for kind of an understanding of what's at stake, we have been tallying up our direct costs, such as buying PPE for staff, other direct costs to respond to the coronavirus, and that is coming to under $2 per capita for every resident of our city. By contrast, if the allocation were on, of the $1 billion was on a simple per capita basis, the allocation for the city would be over $118 per capita. And so there's a big gap in terms of the strictness of the rules and the amount of money that's available. And when we talk about the budget development process for FY21, we're going to be spending a lot of energy in cutting our budget in the midst of this emergency. And I'm not saying that that's not something that everybody is doing. The private sector is certainly doing it, but given the fact that we are the first responders, it would be more effective, I would argue, for us to be spending our efforts in combating the epidemic and getting our economy going, as opposed to slashing our budgets. So that's a summary of where that discussion is. The General Assembly will be meeting on April 22. Their main focus will not be the dispersment of that billion dollars of Federal Care Act money that I was just referencing. They will be in the process of cutting the state budget to address the revenue shortfalls. And they estimate that to be approximately $1 billion each year for the biennium. That's a segue into a more in-depth report on what the General Assembly will be addressing in their special session on April 22. And for that, let me turn it over to Cindy Mester for a bit more information on that. And Cindy, you might be on mute?
I was on mute, sorry about that. And now I just need to fix my presentation. Yes, as Mr. Shields noted, the General Assembly is presenting, reconvening on April 22 in Richmond. It will be unique this year because of the response for safety due to COVID. A lot of staff will not be able to physically be there, but we're closely monitoring. This session will include some of the legislation that was enacted by the General Assembly that he's resubmitting some amendments to, so we'll monitor that and report out. As it relates to the COVID and the emergency response, the budget is being reduced for the revenue projections. It is estimated that none of the new initiatives that were proposed and adopted by the General Assembly will be implemented. They will be put in an unallocated fund and be put on hold, and then during the fall, hopefully August, September, the General Assembly will be able to reconvene, looking at new revenue forecasts and whether any of that can be implemented. Some of the impacts for that will be increases to library and police fundings will be put on hold. The City of Falls Church Affordable Housing Pilot Project will be put on hold. That was to be a $2 million allocation to help us with affordable housing, which was a critical need for the community prior to the situation, and is even more so, but the reality is, there's no funding for new initiatives. Our senator will continue to advocate for that. The transportation funding, which was a big piece of this last General Assembly, to really increase the resources for all modes of transportation, specifically benefiting Northern Virginia, are also being on hold. Many of the revenues will be delayed a full fiscal year. There are a couple that will still be in place for July 1, so pending the outcome of this meeting, we'll be able to get new revenue forecasts and know what the implications are, but they will be less than we were planning in terms of CIP, our resources for our community, both local projects and our WAMADA funding. The one thing that does seem to be preserved right now going into the budget is the K-12 educational funding that was part of the re-benchmarking, and we hope that will hold. So we will continue to monitor this as we work with the General Assembly, both the administration and Senator Sasso and Delegate Simon, and they, of course, have been working closely with us on the federal funding allocation through the state that Mr. Shields described. So with that, Wyatt, I'll end my update for the General Assembly at this point.
So I could transition to a discussion of the FY21 budget, but I do know that a lot of others on council and the mayor have been very active in these regional, state, and federal calls, so maybe before I transition, is there anything that others would like to add on that, on that topic?
All right, anyone on council have anything they would like to note during the discussion? If not, I would just say that I think everyone on council has been actively involved on, frankly, coordinating with our neighbors and with our community from all levels, and I've really been proud to see how we have all worked together during this difficult time, I think, to do the best we can in this very difficult situation. So does anyone have anything specific they would like to add?
I have one question for Mr. Shields, just about the plan to reopen. This is Ms. Conley. Does the City of Falls Church have to follow Fairfax Health District when it comes to, you said, 14 days of decreasing cases? But we fall under Fairfax Health District, so we would have to do what Fairfax does, right?
Yes, and I may take a step further up the food chain, and all of these closures have been dictated by the governor through the executive orders. And so what I would anticipate happening is that localities are going to be following updated orders from Governor Northam on a phased reopening process. One of the big issues for Northern Virginia is for, you know, as the governor is considering that schedule and those criteria, to have a separate working group that is composed of Northern Virginia representatives, that's maybe nested within his larger decision-making structure, so that the decisions in Northern Virginia are made appropriately within the context of the national capital region. It would be not good for anybody if D.C.'s on a different schedule from Virginia, or Montgomery County's on a different schedule. And so that's what, a big part of what we're trying to communicate at the present time.
Okay.
Mr. Shields, might you be involved in such a group?
I, I've been put on a smaller working group with Mark Schwartz, with Arlington County, with the D.C. Deputy Mayor, and two managers from Maryland, to try to keep everybody on the same page. It's going to be tough, I mean, these things all come from, really, the top of each of these, you know, the governors and the mayor, but we will be trying to keep everybody on the same page to the best extent that we're able to, and COG, I think, is a great ally in that.
I would also note that folks from Northern Virginia are coordinating as well, even within the state of Virginia, and we want to make sure that the special needs and interests and circumstances of Northern Virginia are part of the discussion about reopening statewide, because as Mr. Shields noted, we just have different relations. We're close to Washington, we're close to D.C., and so those discussions have been ongoing as well.
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, may I make a couple of comments?
Of course.
Sure, thanks a lot. So I appreciate all the good work that's being done. As you said, we're all involved in it one way or the other. I suspect I'll be involved with it this coming, the rest of this week, as well as before. I do want to make a general statement of concern, however. It looks like we can't expect, at least in the short term, much help from the federal government. It's unlikely we're going to get much help from the state. We're a little more optimistic, but it's unlikely we're going to do that. The current economic situation, in my view, is unsustainable. I have always put public health first and continue to, but what I don't see here, and what I've heard so far, is a real sense of urgency about getting this economy started. You know, when I listen to the four criteria set out, it seems to me they're almost impossible to meet. And so, you know, I guess, what I want to hear is more of a push toward recognizing that the depression that we're in, and let's be honest about that, that's what we're in, has caused significant victims of their own. So while I'm sensitive to the public health issues, and always have been and always will be, where's the sense about, we need to get this open, it needs to be soon, we can't sustain it? Even the federal government that prints money is finding out they can't print enough fast enough to meet the needs of businesses and employees who have been put out of work from these orders. So my question is, how do we communicate to the governor, Wyatt, your group, Mayor and your group, this is not sustainable? To pay people not to work, to subsidize businesses, convert them basically into beggars on the public dole, is not anything anybody wants, nor is it sustainable at any level of government. So tell me more about the sense of urgency here that we've got to have about this, because you can set the public health bar so high that we could never meet it, and we know that's not sustainable. So tell me more about what is the apparatus, and what can we all do as a small government to explain to people, we don't print money, we're not going to get help from Virginia, we're going to do what we can within our budgetary construct and with our businesses, but an indefinite postponement of restarting the economy is not sustainable. So where's, do we have that sense of urgency, and are we communicating it? And maybe we ought to say to the governor, it's not just we're going to follow you, but you need to do some things to enable us to start our economy and in turn yours. Question.
Well, I will give a response, and others can jump in. This is the national discussion. To my way of thinking, the government could do two really useful things to open the economy. One is get our testing apparatus up and running in a big way. And then the second is standing up a very robust contact tracing apparatus, so that when people get sick, they can be isolated, they can go to quarantine, we can track down the people they may have been in contact with, and have them go to quarantine, so that the majority of society can function something close to normally. Both of those require an investment, and they require a performance by government. And I think the testing is something we're struggling with, and we need better performance on that. But I think those are the two big ingredients. And maybe a third, just to complicate it a little bit more, if we're going to be serious about quarantining people that are known to have the disease, there's going to need to be social support for the families of those who are quarantined, so that they actually will quarantine and not go out and work because they have to. I think those, and when you look around the world, where societies are really trying to wrestle with this and figure it out, I think those are the three big elements of success.
Well, let me add a little bit more to that. It seems to me focusing on the vulnerable populations is critical, because this disease is is not hitting uniformly across the demographics. So it seems to me that's another critical element to it. But what, do, do you need to test everybody? In other words, I heard what you said, but what are the metrics? Do you need to test everybody? Will Americans ever agree with the kind of contact tracing that you're talking about? I don't know. Have we set the bar so high that it's impossible to meet? That's my question.
All right, do other folks have comments?
I did, actually. So Wyatt, I actually just think this brings up a good point. So I think as we're seeing in the national dialogue, I think as people, if there was ever a honeymoon period for the quarantine, it's probably about ending for pretty much everybody. And I think it's evident from Mr. Snyder's comments, I think we're going to sense in our population more people getting frustrated with having to quarantine lockdown. So I think it's just important for us to start planning for the communication around why it's important to stay at home and continue doing the social distancing, because I think over, as the weather gets warmer, more people, you know, are going to miss spring, want to look forward to summer, and I think it's important for government to start planning for the communication and the frustration that people are going to feel, and do all the explaining that you did at the beginning of the meeting about why we can't open, and why even if and when we do open and get, you know, the permission kind of from government, it'll be more of a tiptoe as opposed to opening floodgates. So I think that's important to set that expectation through our communication strategy now.
Thank you. Other comments on this topic?
Well, I have one.
Mr. Z?
Yes, thank you. Maybe more than one. What we're dealing with, and the questions that are being asked by council member Schneider, really need to be asked at the national level. Unfortunately, none of us here are married to South Korean women, who are talented artists and can, you know, speak Korean and ask for 500,000 tests, which is more than seven times that's been done in the state of Maryland to date, and more than five states combined. Now, what we have here with regard to a federal situation is that in December and through January, there was an active campaign by the Commerce Department, look it up, I'm not making this stuff up, I wish I could, to sell our COVID-19 masks back to China, the stuff that we had on hand, available. So now, these companies have made their money, and they want to be bailed out. Well, my point is, that's predicament that got us to where we are now. Rest with the feds. This is not something we can do at home ourselves, and we're talking about the potential to furlough, reduce in force, remove part-time some of our staff, and I would be hard over if we went to temporary workers and cut off their health benefits and their pensions. I mean, that's a non-start for me. The question, how do we help some of our most vulnerable populations? Well, that's a very good question. I don't know the answer to that. We're talking about a nearly $5 million shortfall in 2020. That's the question we need to answer first. How do we maintain what Falls Church is known for and not be diverted by, well, let's go down to Richmond and just demonstrate from the governor, tell him you need to open this place up because Falls Church needs to get its business started? I for one will not be burying the gadgets like that. I for one will be here, working to ensure our citizens, all of us, with the best of our ability, have the true Falls Church experience. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Z. Other comments from other, other city council members? Does anyone else have anything to say on this topic before I move on? All right, Mr. Shields, do you want to go on to the next, next item?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we'll give a briefing on our work to present a set of budget options for the city council on the 27th. And, and let me summarize the approach that we're taking, and welcome council comment and input on it. Essentially, what we're doing is starting from the 2020 adopted budget. The 2021 proposed budget on March 9th has essentially been set aside. All of the new initiatives that were funded in that budget are put on hold and will not be part of what's presented to the council on the 27th. We do have certain mandatory cost increase for our contracted services with Arlington County, with Fairfax County, with Womata, sort of those being the big three. Those will be in the FY21 budget. And when you add those in, if we take a modest case, then the city has, we call it the moderate case, the city has a 2.3, $2.4 million gap to close. What we call the worst case, it's not the worst case with a T, but a worst case, we would have a $5.5 million gap to close. The, the approach that we're taking for presentation on the city council is to go with the more moderate case of closing a $2.4 million gap. We would do so in the following broad ways, and I've enlisted all of our department directors now to assist with their suggestions on how to reduce spending. Those are due on Wednesday, and they'll formulate those into a proposal with a quick turnaround for the city council the following Monday, the 27th. But some of the big themes will be keeping a freeze on all current vacancies. We would put a freeze on the pay-as-you-go component to the capital improvements program. In other words, all aspects of the capital improvements program that are funded through the tax rate, we would put a hold on those projects. We would suspend the issuance of any new debt for the capital improvements program. And we would come back together in October to have updated revenue forecasts, and either the situation will have deteriorated further, or it will have ameliorated. The difficulty that we have at this time is that we have no data on what the fiscal impact of the coronavirus will be. We know it's going to be bad. The city has about 25% of its revenues are directly related to business activities, meals taxes, sales taxes, hotel taxes, and that type of direct business activity taxes, the business license tax. When you compare that to other localities, towns, for instance, other localities have some 40 to 50% of their revenues come from those types of business activities, and they have more vulnerability to it than the City of Falls Church does. Nonetheless, it is, obviously, it's very severe for our business community, and that translates into severity for the city's finances. That's a, a quick summary. Kiran Bawa has been instrumental in working with me and with staff to do the revenue forecasting, to come up sort of the range of the models. I also want to note that we've been in pretty constant contact with their school administration, with Dr. Noonan, and with Kristin Michael in particular, to share our information with them, have them share information with us, because they have some direct impacts as well. They get revenues from state sales taxes and direct aid from the Commonwealth, and the Commonwealth has its own fiscal crisis that it's going to be addressing on Wednesday. So we are working this together to try to close this gap together. But that's a summary of, of some of the broad outlines of the approach that we're, will take. What would, you know, with this approach, council should expect about $2.4 million of cuts to the 2020 budget, the current year's budget, in order to close this gap, again with a plan of revisiting. We'll, we'll have a monthly update, but really taking another thorough look at it again in the fall to assess where we are. Before we stop for questions, I'm sure I left some important things out, so let me ask Kiran if she could jump in and, and add what she would have to say to this, this process.
Good evening, Mayor Carter and members of the council. City Manager, Mr. Shields, has covered pretty much everything. I do want to just iterate the basic things that I share with my colleagues, department heads, that the decline in the second quarter in the national GDP is projected somewhere between 20 to 30%. And the first quarter also saw a decline, so we are obviously headed towards a clear recession. This double-digit is a significant decrease and impacts our local economy. Keeping that in mind, we have come up with our projections, a moderate and a worst case. And we are going, proposing that a lot of the programs that we have funding for and capital would be deferred. We do plan to come back to council after a proposal next week and an adoption, hopefully within the next few weeks. We do plan to come back to council as we get some data to us, the earliest that we would have it would be in August. And as part of the first quarter review of the fiscal year 21 budget, we would come back to council at that time with some revisions, hopefully towards the positive, but in sync with what we see in the economy and, and the trends, the initial trends that we start seeing on the data. I think Mr. Shields has covered everything on the balancing measures. The only thing I would like to say is that our intent is to bring to you a moderate scenario, in which case we would obviously not want to use any of the reserve funds, which are treated as purely one-time. If we use those, it would project a big, put up bigger hole for fiscal year 22 budget for us to address. But in the worst case, the numbers are bigger than what we can handle, the impact would be larger. We are not intending to go towards layoffs or furloughs at this time, and manage within the vacancies that we have, and keeping them frozen for part of the year, and in the worst case, for the whole year. And steps could be drastic if the worst situation is reached, or if the worse, further than worse, is reached. So with that, I'll just conclude and open up for questions that you may have.
Mayor, can I add one, one thing that I think is of interest? With respect to stormwater, obviously, we've put a lot of effort and planning into major stormwater projects in the capital improvements program for the coming year, and your stormwater task force is wrapping up its recommendations. You got their briefing about a month ago. One of the premises that we're operating under is that under the current state of our economy, assessing a new fee, given the fiscal stress that our community is under, and probably most particularly that our business community is under right now, that we would defer consideration of that fee increase, again, until the fall, when we have a better picture of, of the economic capacity and, and sort of the status of the community. We would keep those stormwater projects, we'd finish up the report, we'd keep them, you know, in our minds in terms of doing all the staff planning we can for them. And we would also move forward with the smaller projects that are being paid for out of funds that exist in the stormwater fund right now. So that would be, you know, some of the, the immediate projects that we had laid out and, and as part of this process. It would be the major projects that require the issuance of debt, that we would advance the planning on to the extent that we can do that with staff, but we'd hold off on contracting major preliminary engineering contracting services, or certainly construction, until such time as we're able to consider the fees that would be required to finance those projects.
Mr. Shields?
Yes?
Wyatt, I wondered if I could add a little bit on the transportation CIP side?
Yes, please do.
So as we mentioned with the General Assembly and looking at the revenues and changes to the transportation, we will be looking closely at the proposed CIP to assess any impact from a reduction in the 30% in VTA funds. So that's ongoing. We're also looking at maximizing the city's benefit of the federal stimulus, Part II of the Womata money, so that we can hopefully receive some benefit for our operating subsidy to Womata. And finally, because of the point that Mr. Shields made in terms of the pay-go, key projects that are locally funded in the transportation as proposed for FY21 will have to be deferred until the fall, and that specifically would be neighborhood traffic calming, the new proposed sidewalk program, as well as the LED streetlight conversion. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. Do any members of council have questions or comments? Mr. Z, did you have something?
I, I do. Let me just, I'll just run down what the city manager said with respect to stormwater. As everyone knows, and all of us on council, quite frankly, not just me, we have, it's taken us a while to get to a point where we've said, yes, we need to do something with stormwater, especially for the neighborhoods most affected, even though for the longest time we've, that, hey, you bought the house, it's your problem. Well, it only works for a while until there's enough weight that says, yeah, I bought the house, but I didn't expect to live in a tsunami zone. So, yeah, we need to do something, and we need to do something soon. But now is not the time to do that. And in addition to me, council member Hardy, and Lichtenhouse, they probably have their own opinions on this, but it goes to keeping our powder dry. We pick a moderate case, and yeah, that works, you know? That's fabulous. If it's beyond worst case, I have no idea what you call that CFO, beyond worst case, BWC, that's what we'll call it, BWC. Beyond worst case, we're all in a lot of hurt here. Once we've spent the money, we can't ask for back. So I would be one to say, what we can defer, what we can save, what we can hold, let's do that. Let's start with the stormwater. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Z. Mr. Lichtenhouse had a comment as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. Just a couple of comments. I want to make sure that I'm clear here. Mr. Shields, you guys are saying that both, at least based on the inter-office memorandum that was sent around, you guys aren't planning on using reserves for either the moderate or the worst case for fiscal year 2020, is that correct?
We are not planning to use reserves in the moderate case. In other words, in the case that we would bring to you on the 27th.
Okay. All right. One thing that I would ask, after looking at that, I'm opposed to removing some of the investments related to our spot improvement and our traffic calming. The first thing that's going to happen, when the states start to get their arms wrapped around the budget, are going to be to cut things related to transportation. And if I was sitting in their seats, I could see how they would justify it in their own minds, that even when they do decide to release folks back into the wild, they're going to see it as gradual, and that investments in transportation, the need and impacts to infrastructure are probably going to be less concentrated than they were before this crisis. And that'll probably last for the better part of a year, if, if I was a betting man. So I would say that some of those funds that we're expecting to get, especially like the grants for traffic calming and other things, are going to be pulled back. I wouldn't bank on getting any of that money. I think it would be short-sighted for us not to make these small investments. Frankly, I, I understand that it's kind of the low-hanging fruit, and doesn't cause us to make maybe some of the tougher decisions on the op- make maybe some of the tougher decisions on the operational side. This is exactly the time that we should be, we should be making these improvements and having folks out in the community building and working on these spot improvements and traffic calming. So I'd like to see that money put back in, and I don't want to see that money lost for fiscal year 2020. As it relates to the reserves, things are going to be worse, I think, than we're currently projecting. We do actually benefit, ironically, even though this has been a point of concern for us, that most of our property tax base is driven off of residential, which doesn't seem to be hit quite as hard if we had more of a disproportionate commercial base. So I think things will still be rough, but I do think that maybe not, not as pronounced it will be in neighboring jurisdictions. With that being said, things related to stormwater, things related to other CIP projects, some of the other pain that we're going to feel in some of the other areas where we're going to be missing out on taxes, I think that we need to be prepared to draw down on some of those reserves slightly. Those reserves are there for a reason. I'm not saying we want to raid reserves, but I do want that to be considered in the equation, because I don't want us to make short-sighted decisions on investments that we know are going to benefit both our citizens as well as our business community in the long run, simply because it's an easy way for us to save a few hundred thousand dollars. So I'd like to see a bit of a more, maybe balanced look, and maybe dig a little bit deeper to see where we can cut some of those costs and consider some other areas as opposed to some of the investments that we know we need to make, but just seem to be the path of least resistance, given the current crisis, but things that we know that we're going to need and will be an investment for the community after this is all over, and really even in the short term before it's over. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Other comments?
Can I ask a question?
Of course, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. Wyatt, you'd said that freezing vacancies is one of your first go-tos. What does that do for you? How many vacancies do we have now in a staff size that's a couple hundred?
We anticipate that the savings, if we take the current vacancies and extend them out six months, that'll save about $680,000.
Okay, all right, thank you. My second question is, Karen, if somebody from Wall Street jumped out from behind a bush and said, how many dollars do you have in reserve in the city of Falls Church? What is the answer to that question?
Karen, you might be on mute.
I think we may have lost her and she'll have to log back in.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, I'll hold that question for later. I'm, I would like for her to hear that I'm generally supportive of what the manager's outlined. I do think that Mr. Lichtenhouse has a good point in that we need to have a strategy for reserves that is as nuanced and forward-looking as our strategy for everything else that we do, public health and budget generally. So by October, I would hope that we would obviously not need to draw on reserves, but I would like for us to get to October with a clear understanding of how we might use reserves if we need to, to help pull us through and do that, that job that Wyatt outlined that is an important job for local governments, which is providing for the public health and also employing public employees in public safety and first responder and really in every other area where local governments are asked to do much of the heavy lifting. So I would like us to weigh the amount that we have in reserves with the consideration of the employees who we have, whom we've invested in and whom we rely upon. Again, I hope that we would not have to make that choice, but if we come to October, I would like, I would at least like a better understanding of what we have in reserve at that stage.
Mr. Duncan, Ms. Bowel appears to have joined, rejoined the video conference. You might want to ask your question again if her?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Karen, I just wondered if somebody jumped from behind a bush from Wall Street and asked, how many dollars in reserve does the city of Falls Church have? What would be the answer to that question?
Thank you for the question, Karen. I am on, but I was off, so I missed the question. Can someone please repeat?
Mr. Duncan?
Karen, if someone from Wall Street jumped from behind a bush and asked you, how many dollars does the city of Falls Church have in reserve? What is the answer to that question?
In the unassigned fund balance, we have about 18% of our expenditures. The current policy requires from a floor of 12 to a ceiling of target of 17%. 1% is roughly around a million, a little short. And shifting to the newer policy, since next year, we are going to be over our debt service to expenditure ratio over our threshold of 12%, and the requirement is between a floor of 15 to a target of 20%. We have in capital reserves roughly a little over 30%, however, 32%. However, the capital reserves are contingent upon receiving the payments, the four payments from the developer for the next four years, starting in fiscal year 21. So just need to be mindful of that.
And on, is the 30% number also, how many dollars is that per percent? So the unassigned fund balance, you said it was a million, a million for every point. So if we got 18%, we have 18 million. What is the capital reserve in dollars?
The capital reserve balance by itself is 11.7% as of June that passed, and it is going to be about 17 million projected for June of 2020.
Yes, and I understand, I understand what you said about the payments from the developer. Obviously, we'll, we'll know more about that at some point, hopefully, certainly by October, we'll know more about that. Okay, thank you.
All right, do other folks have questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did.
Ms. Hardy?
Great, thank you. So I generally agree with the manager's presentation. I certainly wouldn't support increasing stormwater fees right now in the current environment, so I think it makes sense to do the things that we can out of the current fund. I do share some of Ross and Phil's thoughts, though, on kind of the longer-term capital infrastructure projects, mainly because I am concerned that when we get to the other side, those needs don't go away. And so I want to make sure that we don't halt the work altogether, because I don't think traffic is ever going to go away in this region, and stormwater certainly not going away either. So I'd like us to be creative to think about how we can keep those projects going, keep the designs going, and get things on the shelf, and potentially think about using reserves, because I do think it's, makes sense from a long-term investment. On the question about unassigned fund balances, similar to how we did stress tests on reserves and looking at the capital planning when we did the large high school plan, do we have similar stress tests on how long the unassigned fund balance plus capital reserves will last us, I guess, if the recession goes on for a certain amount of time? How deep a recession can we withstand? Because I think that's an important part of the analysis, before we talk about how much of reserves can we pull out, just to look at what that worst, worst case is. Is that analysis that we've done so far?
Well, we haven't, and the reason we haven't is because we haven't, we don't really have a policy on the use of reserves. And so it's hard for us to model when we would start to use the reserves for our operating budget, you know, what type of a crisis would we need to be in before we start drawing reserves just to balance our books in a crisis. Which, really, what our strategy is to try to avoid doing that at all. And so really, the thing that we can model is, and have modeled, is if there's a delay to the 10-acre development, how long can we go before we're out of our capital reserves? And that has always been a 24-month planning horizon, that we can withstand a 24-month delay in that project before we have to take on all of that debt service out of the tax rate, as opposed to the planned use of reserves. And that's, that's not a new number, we've discussed that two-year cushion really from the beginning of our planning process. So it's not a full answer to your question. I think we would, you know, the use of reserves to deal with a kind of, in a rainy day kind of a way, to deal with a here and now crisis, is something, we don't have a number for you on that right now.
And on the opposite side, so similar to what I've mentioned the past two meetings, is I want to make sure we are thinking about funding for vulnerable populations, whether that's increased meals or rent relief, to make sure we are caring for the vulnerable. Likewise, for employees, what I've seen private companies do is actually increase pay for people who have to be on the front lines, who are, you know, are grocery store workers. And so similarly, Wyatt, I don't know whether you've given thought to kind of putting, building in hazard pay for people like our police officers and public works folks who don't have the option of working from home.
It has been discussed, and it's not something that we're proposing at the current con, but the point is well-understood, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
So in this conversation, we're talking about the 2021 budget and cuts our current 2020 budget and the hole that we have to fill there. Has there been any progress made this week in filling that hole?
Vice Mayor Connolly, part of your question, we lost because I think you were muted for a portion of it. Could you repeat the question? My apologies.
Sorry. Yeah, no, as we talked right now about the 2021 budget and adjustments that have to be made to that, last week, we talked a little bit about the hole, the 20, in the current 2020 budget. And I'm just wondering, have you made any progress this week towards filling that hole or things that could be cut or changes that have been made?
So our strategy for the current fiscal year is going to be similar for 2020, for the 2021 approach, and that is to, we have a very hard vacancy freeze in place, and we are asking the pay-as-you-go components to the, to the budget in 2020 are requiring kind of a second layer of scrutiny before any of those dollars are spent, so that we can use those also to close the gap for the current fiscal year. Ms. Bowel, would you have anything to add to that?
That pretty much summarizes it all. We will bring to you a budget amendment towards the end of the fiscal year, should any additional funding be required for appropriation or transfer of funding between programs or projects. Lack of any data, where it'll have to be closer towards the end of the year. And we're trying our level best to watch the expenditures and realize savings to weather the drop in the revenues.
So, so just to follow up on that, then the budget amendment that we passed in late February, that's all been put on hold?
So the, it has been. We are having meetings with the neighbors on the neighborhood traffic calming projects, but we are also communicating to them that we want to finalize the designs with them, but before we actually expend the funds on the project, we're going to continue to evaluate our fiscal condition. That's what we've communicated to the neighbors with whom we're having these, you know, these conceptual planning meetings right now.
And will they come back to us for approval again, or will that just be staff-based?
We will certainly discuss it with the city council, because this is, obviously, it's an important council initiative, and so we will continue that dialogue about go, no-go. Currently, our read of the situation is the funding, we need to hold on to the funds at the present time.
Okay. And then there was an email today from Mr. Gustafson regarding the Trammell branch stormwater intertwined with the WNOD renovations. And I guess today is the last day for public comment on the WNOD renovations, but there is, he had some concerns that the stormwater was not wrapped in there, even though for the last four months, we've been hearing that the stormwater would be wrapped into that. Do you have any update on that?
The, so the dialogue has been good with the Parks Authority and our stormwater staff. There are different engineering options on how to solve the Trammell branch backwater issue, and so we have a bit more work still to do with the Park Authority to finalize that design and make sure that when they do their work, we don't have to come back and redo it. But I think we're all on the same page that we're going to avoid that.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right, do other folks on council have any comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So this discussion, I think, is a painful illustration of the more general point that I tried to make a few minutes ago, which is to set the bar impossibly high, is, creates its own set of victims, which may even exceed a number others. So we're confronted now with potentially looking at hitting reserves, trying to maintain employee, the employment that we have, cutting, essentially cutting all the neighborhood traffic calming and all the stormwater projects. I think with regard to the stormwater and the neighborhood traffic calming, I think we have to be very careful, particularly on those two items. They have been items of very significant public input, and I think we're going to need to keep them very much in the balance. We may need to modify what the city manager is talking about tonight, but it's a little bit early for that. But I think that totally removing expenditures on real projects for stormwater and neighborhood traffic calming could have very severe impacts in terms of our public credibility. So I think we really need to think about this. But I will say in conclusion, all this illustrates all too well the urgency of getting the economy back and running as fast as possible. Otherwise, we're going to be unable to do what the citizens expect us to do at the local level. So hopefully, we can communicate that loud and clear, in addition to dealing with it to the extent that we can at the local level, loud and clear to the state and federal governments as well, as they make decisions about when our economy can be open. Thank you.
All right, other comments as to the budget issue? If not, I've got a few thoughts that I'd like to share. I do think we ought to be conservative.
Before you do wrap up, I'd just like to say that just following on Vice Mayor Mary Beth Connolly's comment with respect to trail, there are comments in and in front of us with regard to cut until that affects six or seven households. If we decide that their comments don't matter, I think we can do better, because that ought to be incorporated in our planning. I have not looked at the plans that will provide to us from the WNOD trail people, the Parks Authority, but I will look at them in turn. I would hate to be in your shoes if you were to tell them that, yeah, we, due to COVID-19, would decide to just go ahead and do what it is that we do, which goes to their sense that decision they're made without transparency. People use a bike path an awful lot right now. It's one of, one of the places I, in particular, I make sure I wear a mask because of the bicyclists that stream through and put their aerosols, aerosols into the air. So anyway, it's just a way of being cautious. I do have a budget question that relates to your ongoing model. As we know, in 2008, 2010, it took roughly 247 days, nearly a year, to get to Days for nearly a year to get to the bottom. And so it is one way of saying that you had we had a little bit of time to to plan, to test, to see what the reaction was. We didn't know what the bottom was at that time, but we could through cautious manipulation of our resources, get to that point. This bottom that we've now reached, we got there in 52 days. So my question is, knowing that, what did we model on the 2008 recession and our path to recovery? How did the actuals compare to what we modeled throughout that whole period of time? Remember, we're talking about a year or more, instead of having to react to this over a spread of a few months between two of our fiscal years. And if you give that in percentages or accuracy, that would give me some data to understand where we're going, instead of. Relying on what perhaps other jurisdictions are are doing as a model. Because, you know, we may not have it all correct either. But, you know, if history is there, we need to look at that. Thank you so much for your information.
One other question. I wanted to follow up because I'm I didn't understand the city manager's response. We got a note from one of the most active people on the stormwater issue regarding the W and OD, where he's saying now, based upon cities engineering, we're not going under the trail. And yet I heard the city manager say everybody was on the same page. It doesn't sound like everybody is on the same page. Maybe, Mr. City Manager, could you explain what it is we're doing and why some of our citizens are are seen not to be on the same page?
I need to read Mr. Gustafson's letter. I have not read it yet. The there there were a couple of different engineering solutions for the Trammell branch, one which was to not cross the trail, but to have a new pipe on the south side of the trail. And creating a new outfall to four mile run. The other solution is to cross the trail and use the existing outfall into four mile run. So we need to resolve that. My point was that I think the Park Authority is on the same page and that they want us to to get that pipe taken care of as part of the dual trails project, obviously, so we don't come back and tear it up after the the new trails have just been completed. We're on the we're all on the same page with respect to that.
Well, then could I ask that you respond then to the citizen and maybe report back to the council on the development? Because it seems that at least our citizens are not on the same page here. At least they gave the impression that that was their sense.
Certainly.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Snyder. And City Manager, you also need to read the comments in by Matt Reese, a member of the Stormwater Task Force. Makes some very good points there with regard to doing the doing the trail. I am fearful that in our zeal to get this thing done, we just are ignoring people who have spent time and effort trying to clean up their backyard and to say, well, thanks for all that. We're going to bulldoze it. We need to find a common ground that they get convinced that what's been planned is the only true way that we can approach this, or if we can have a. Solution, a compromise solution that makes everybody a little bit happier that we find too. And when you do report to us with regard to that status, I for one would appreciate if you would tell us what it is with regard to the. The funding for this trail improvement. Does it have a expiration date? If so, does it have the provision for a rescission waiver? So these are all important things. Thank you so much.
All right. Are there other questions on the budget? If not, I've got a few comments that I like to make. And I I guess I would start by just saying I think we ought to be conservative at this point as relates to our reserves. We're just we're just in the start of of all this and the fiscal crisis. We're deep into it, but it's unclear how deep and how far it's going to go. And so I think we ought to keep our powder dry, at least for the moment. I do think there'll be some more clarity in the next couple of weeks as to what, if any, direct aid will be getting from either the federal or state governments. And so there is some talk in the fourth round of stimulus money that there may be aid to local governments, in which case that could improve our financial situation dramatically. Also, I think we have something that's somewhat unique in the region, which is a very expensive high school that's under construction. We have the obligation to pay for it, but the economic development is not underway yet. And so I think we have greater risk than other folks do in the area. And so I think we need, which bodes to me, to be extra conservative with our reserve money. So that's my two cents, at least for the present. I certainly at some point, I think it very well could be appropriate to use our reserves, but I think we need to get through this next stretch, planning on other means to do so. Why don't I go ahead and open it up? If the conversation as to the budget is essentially through to anything else that's on people's minds as relates to the COVID emergency or the continuity of government that hasn't previously been discussed, or anyone would like to mention that that again, the conversation is limited to state law at the present time. But if there are any other comments that relate to the emergency that we're under right now, and or the continuity government, I'd welcome them now. Does anyone else have any other comments to make?
I have a question, comment, Mayor.
Yes.
That is, I noticed in the the communication that came out from the city today.
You're breaking up again, Vice Mayor.
Sorry, let me try that again. In the communication that came out from the city government today to the whole community, it says that the Fairfax Health District is now breaking out Falls Church City as a separate entity in counting COVID cases. And I think it said there were 24 cases in the city of Falls Church, but the 24 known cases. And I'm just wondering from Mr. Shields or Ms. Mester, did the health districts explain why they decided to break it out separately? And and what difference is that going to make to the people in the city of Falls Church?
Nancy Vincent is on this call as well, and she's about to give a briefing on our outreach to vulnerable populations, as well as work that we do to liaise with Fairfax Health. So when we get to her presentation, we could answer that question.
Okay.
Why don't we get to that presentation then?
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Nancy, and then Nancy's presentation will be followed by a presentation about our outreach and efforts to support the business community. But let's start with our outreach and support for our vulnerable populations in the city. Nancy.
Good evening, council. It's great to see everybody virtually here. So I do plan to give an just kind of an update on what's happening to our vulnerable population and then briefly talk about the Health Department and some of the stats that are coming out. So so first of all, Falls Church residents are continuing to be served through our contracts with Fairfax County. Services for older adults is providing home-based medical care and other home-based services such as housekeeping and laundry, as well as coordinating the Meals on Wheels deliveries. Cases under Adult Protective Services are continuing and new referrals are being accepted. At the Winter Hill community, HHS staff are in frequent contact with the resident program coordinator and receiving updates on how residents are doing and what their needs are. Staff can provide referrals for food, emergency dental, and transportation, among other things. Tomorrow, the Capital Area Food Bank will be delivering three months of non-perishable food to the members of that community. Many of the many of them also have family members who are checking on them. Staff have also been in contact with other residents who are seeking services through our offices and providing assistance. Food referrals are being made to the Falls Church Community Services Council and to Food for Others. Regarding our homeless population, staff are in contact with the Office to Prevent and End Homelessness Outreach Workers. Staff advocated to have a healthcare homeless outreach worker provide intake and to provide hotel vouchers for our homeless population. And staff at HHS have conducted in-person and virtual outreach, including including distributing masks. The homeless drop-in centers continue to operate and provide services such as bathing, food, mail distribution, and laundry. So in general, our homeless population are doing as well as can be expected. Regarding healthcare, city residents may apply for Medicaid through the Department of Family Services by phone or online. There are no walk-ins, but but the applications are still being taken. City residents who are not eligible for Medicaid may seek medical services through Neighborhood Health. And Neighborhood Health continues to do intake for regular medical care and is also capable of assessing and testing for COVID-19. So after a phone consultation with a doctor, a patient can go to the Neighborhood Health Maryfield location for testing. City residents without dental insurance may call HHS for emergency dental care and referral to the Northern Virginia Dental Clinic. Although regular exams are not being conducted, emergency visits are being continued. People with health insurance are encouraged to continue with their primary care physician if they have symptoms. So in light of the impact of COVID to the city's economy, affordable housing will be critical. The city has hired consultants to help us find a way for to do affordable housing. And last week, the city manager sent a letter to all property managers in the city's multifamily properties to provide suggestions to allow for leniency in rent payments. These suggested included no late penalty fees and making payment arrangements. The letter was also translated into Spanish. The city will receive $39,000 in additional CDBG funds dedicated to COVID relief for low and moderate income residents. So so these payments will assist residents who have had to make those payment arrangements with their landlords and eventually will have to catch up. And these funds will they should be available before July. Additionally, staff has contacted all three grocery stores in the city to ask them to have senior shopping hours as a result of COVID. And as far as outreach goes, staff have contacted every rental and condo property in the city, every place of worship, and the nonprofits. Staff prepared and distributed a Health Department flyers and created resources from HHS and distributed them either by hand to to various properties in the city, or gave them to property managers to distribute or sent them out in the mail. So we all we have been conducting outreach beyond the virtual. As far as virtual outreach, communications has been doing a great job of getting that daily update out and updated the HHS website to make it more user friendly. We've also been working with school counselors to provide resources to the families that who they are working with. And a positive a positive note is as we're conducting this outreach, people are talking about how great neighbors have been. So the the individuals who are in in the city, the residents are doing a really, really great job of checking up on their neighbors and getting people what what they need. So so with that, before I continue with some of the Health Department stuff, does anybody have any questions for me?
All right. Any questions for Ms. Vincent?
Mayor, I did.
Yes, Ms. Hardy.
Great. Well, Nancy, thank you for that update. And first of all, actually, thank you for continuing the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in the garden at Cherry Hill. And I think recognizing that, in fact, in situations like this, domestic violence and child abuse actually risk is actually higher when everyone is very stressed and stuck at home together. So I think that was important to do in the background. I thought it was great news to hear just now. You said that the Winter Hill senior citizens are getting three months of food from a food pantry. If other people wanted access to that, do they have to be members of that community? Is it really meant for that population? Or how else would people who might be? Food insecure have similar access?
So so staff can do referrals for anybody who needs it. So they can can talk can contact HHS and we can do a referral for food.
Have we gotten a sense of whether demand has certainly increased in the past month?
Demand has increased. It's it's unfortunately not not a huge demand so far. We have low income families and our homeless population do have SNAP benefits. A lot of them do have SNAP benefits and so still have access to food, fortunately. The with the Winter Hill community is being served through the Capital Area Food Bank, and we are making making the referrals for food. We're getting lots of calls, not only from Falls Church residents, but from Fairfax County residents, and referring those those folks to the appropriate resources.
Sounds like the first step is they have to contact HHS to make that request, and then we can help connect them to the right resources.
We can absolutely connect them to to food resources.
And so similar to comments I've made in the past for just general communication, I just want to make sure we're cognizant of not only using social media and online, because I assume many parts of our vulnerable population, like our older senior citizens, may not be able to get online. And so whether it's the news press ads or more targeted communication where we know people might need help, let's make sure we go to them as opposed to expecting them to come to us.
That's absolutely true. And that's why we did the flyer and handed out went took them took flyers door to door in Winter Hill and at the Fields and Virginia Village. Left them up on people's doors, put them in the mail, because you're absolutely right that not everybody has access to electronic media.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Ms. Vincent?
I.
What?
I do have a question, Mayor.
Ms. Connolly.
Ms. Vincent, have you? I've read some stories about people who have had health insurance, who have lost their health insurance because they've lost their jobs. Are you seeing that happen in Falls Church? And can those people then apply for Medicaid right away?
People who are eligible for Medicaid can apply through the Department of Family Services. So that so we do contract with Fairfax County for that. And those who are not eligible, anybody can make use of Neighborhood Health. Or so even if they're waiting for Medicaid eligibility to be processed and to have an immediate need, can use the Neighborhood Health. And they're right there at Maryfield.
Okay. And then my other question just relates to Aurora House, Miller House, Argus House, and any people that we have that are in prison. How are things going in those places? Do we have cases of COVID-19 there? Are is Aurora House, are kids still there? Have they all gone home?
We do have residents at Aurora House. We we there are residents there who don't have homes to go to, or or can't return home for whatever reason. We have not had a case of the COVID-19 there. There are there are no visitors allowed, and staff are wearing masks all day. So so that population I can I can speak to. Argus House, I I do not know about the you were talking about prisons. So you're talking about the detention centers. I can find out that information and get that information to you.
Okay, okay. And is there anything we can do for the everybody at Argus House is locked down there with no visitors? Can we? Is there anything we can do for them?
They're trying to keep they're trying to keep them as active as they can with. Physical activities, going out, and also, I mean, it's just whatever they can do. They're doing their schoolwork online, virtually, if they can get in. Arlington's had a little better luck than the Fairfax County and. Falls Church. So so they're 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 moving along, but but. So they're moving along, but they cannot accept visitors now. And in fact, they're doing their appointments, their counseling appointments, their probation appointments are all, are being held virtually.
And then what about Miller House?
At Miller House, I have not heard of it or have not had a report of cases at Miller House, but I can find out about that as well and get back to you.
Does anyone else have any questions at this point? If not, Ms. Vincent, why don't you go on and finish your presentation?
Okay. Ms. Mester, will you put up the slide?
Yep, bring it up.
So the slide here shows the number of cases in the Fairfax Health District. The Fairfax Health District includes the residents in Fairfax County, the city of Fairfax, and the city of Falls Church. And these are the cases from April 1st through today. And these are the number of cases reported daily. So you can see that on April 1st, there were forty, looks like forty-three cases that were reported and today there were 150 cases. And part of the reason that this is important is to look at the trends that Mr. Shields was discussing. The criteria for reopening is 14 consecutive days of decreasing cases. The Health Department is telling us that they expect that the cases have not plateaued yet, that there's still being an increase in the curve, so to speak. So we're going to have to continue to watch this for the coming days and weeks. Additionally, now that there's been some evidence of community transmission, the Health Department is going to be standing up what they're called, calling a COVID-19 dashboard. And that should be stood up by the end of this week. And it'll have more information than we can currently find on their website. And this will break the case data down by not only count, but also by age, sex, race, number of people tested, and hospitalizations. And it'll have the curve that we will be able to see it from the date of the onset of the illness. So the information that's presented on this chart here is based on really cases that have been tested. We know that the number of tests have been very low. And so as the testing has increased, this data will become better and more useful and we'll have the additional data from this dashboard, like I say, by the end of the Any questions about this?
All right, great, thank you. Other questions?
Could I ask just one question about that graph? So the dashboard that you described, is that going to break it out by city as apart from the county or is that just the whole Fairfax County data?
That will be the Fairfax County data. If you would like to have it broken out by city, I can make that request if that would be, if that will be useful.
Well, I defer to what other people think about that. I mean, to me, the data is, we need to be very data-driven in our decisions and the more data we can get, as long as it's, you know, accurate and, you know, responsible and not invades anybody's privacy. But I think it would be a good objective, for instance, for Falls Church to set a goal to everybody who lives here and works here should be tested. And I have no idea how that would happen today. It wouldn't happen today. But, you know, over the next sixty, ninety days, a community as resourceful as ours ought to be able to find a way to make that happen. So if they could give us, you know, Falls Church-specific data, I think that would help us here.
I can certainly make that request.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, Snyder here. So is it possible that this graph just reflects the fact that we're testing more people? And we know that most COVID-19 cases are moderate or the symptoms are very mild or practically nonexistent. So how are we doing in terms of the fatality rate, which seems to me a better measure of how we're actually doing because this could just simply reflect the fact that we're doing more testing? And there's some evidence that community immunity grows under some circumstances. Whether that's the case here or not remains to be seen, but how are we doing in terms of the fatality rate?
I'm looking that up right now. So the data I have is Friday's data and it shows the fatality rate in the Fairfax Health District is thirty-seven. And a total of almost fifteen hundred cases.
Thirty-seven of sixteen hundred cases.
Of about fifteen hundred.
Okay. So do we know what the trend is there? Because it seems to me that's even a more critical number than this. We have a positive trend, negative trend, you know, what, how are we doing there?
The thirty-seven is the total cases. That's not a, that's not a daily, that's not a daily rate. So when you're asking for trends, I mean, I can do it by day, by day, but that's the total.
Right. Well, everyone is obviously important, but what I'm trying to establish here is the chart that we're looking at now, does that simply reflect the fact that we're doing more testing and that this is the kind of virus that's circulating widely and that really what we're picking up is simply more, more people are being tested? It's showing that yes, there are a lot of people infected, but most of those people are going to have moderate or symptoms or be asymptomatic. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand what this chart really shows.
Yes, and that's absolutely true. So the vast majority of people will have mild symptoms and recover. The statistic I heard was a full eighty percent that will be the case. And yes, more, more testing is being done and as more testing becomes, becomes available, these numbers will, these numbers will increase. So as Mr. Shields said, really, the key to getting a handle on this is much more widespread testing. So in order to make this data something that's useful. Right now, with the small amount of testing, this, the data that you see in this chart is moderately useful at best.
Right. So I guess the question is if you do more testing, you're going to find more infections. Most of those infections are moderate to minor. So by actually doing more testing, are you delaying the opening of the economy? Because you're not going to have fourteen days, you're going to have, you're going to have, tend to have actually an upward movement because you're doing more testing. So this is where these metrics seem to me to need more work in and of themselves to understand what they really mean in terms of how long the economy is going to be prostrate.
One of the other reasons that testing is helpful is for what's called herd immunity. And that, and that happens when you have a significant portion of the population that has recovered from the illness and then, and then has immunity. So by testing, we're able to get a, get a better idea of if that is happening.
Right. Thank you very much for all the work.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Nancy, and maybe you've covered this in a, in previous conversation. The, the testing that's being done or the studies that are coming out of Fairfax, do they have any idea of how many folks that are testing positive that are asymptomatic? In Fairfax's numbers?
In the Fairfax numbers, I do not.
Okay.
I imagine very few. And only because if somebody was asymptomatic, they would not have a reason to be tested unless there was, unless there were a contact of somebody who had, who was symptomatic.
Got it. So you don't know of anybody doing testing, random sampling, just to see who may be symptomatic or asymptomatic, seeing who tests positive?
That's not happening right now.
Okay, all right. I just, I found it interesting, just for maybe folks' edification. The USS Theodore Roosevelt, when they went through and tested, the sailors there with the outbreak, sixty percent, at least this is what was reported, sixty percent of those that were tested showed up as, that tested positive showed up as asymptomatic, which I've found interesting and frightening to some extent. But I thought that was interesting. So it'd be, it'd be good to know if we ever get that information from Fairfax or even state agencies. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Vincent? Thank you so much for the fine work you're doing throughout our community and with our most vulnerable populations. We greatly appreciate it and look forward to further updates from you. Mr. Shields, we want to go on to the last item on our agenda, which is support for local businesses.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to echo what you just said. Nancy and the whole team, Dana Lewis and Leslyn Barrow, Ripple Patel, and Rachel Kendall there at the Roar House are, you know, when I mentioned earlier about innovation and trying to figure out how to deliver services in the, in a very changed environment, they're doing that every day and very grateful for that. So we'll transition now to support for the business community. And we're joined by Becky Witzman, our Business Services Manager, Jim Snyder, our Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, the Chairman of our Economic Development Authority, Bob Young, and the Executive Director of our Chamber of Commerce, Sally Cole. As you know, we've had a team that's been working now for a month to try to provide support for our business community. And so we're going to talk tonight about a proposal to use EDA funds and under the EDA's authority, the Economic Development Authority's, under its sort of, its statutory ability to provide direct aid to small businesses in particular in the city. So let me turn it over to Becky for a description of the program. Or Becky, I know you all have sort of worked out how you want to present this, but let me turn it over to you and to the team.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, staff, and others. In introducing the possibility of an emergency COVID small business grant program to you tonight, I first want to say that this proposed program is a work in progress. Many aspects of the framework of this proposed program are borrowed, meaning that they come from similar financial assistance programs being offered by our neighboring jurisdictions. Now, before we get into the PowerPoint slides, I want to acknowledge and thank Letty Hardy for all of her research work over the last several days because her work and her outline have been the basis for our collective efforts. As well, Bob Young and Jim Coyle spent many hours on this program over the weekend, so I'd like to acknowledge their many contributions, as well as Cindy Mester, who has helped guide us through this process. So the first slide that is up on the screen now provides a summary of the proposed grant program as well as program goals. We can also review more details on a second PowerPoint slide, and I'd be happy to email that to you tomorrow. So first, what is the draft emergency COVID business grant program? It's what I would call a micro grant program, and it's targeted to small businesses with gross receipts of less than $500,000, which is a primary criteria that's verifiable with assistance from the Commissioner of the Revenue. The program, as Wyatt mentioned, would be funded by EDA funds, not general fund monies. Additional EDA funds beyond the initial $100,000 are possibly available should we feel the need to add additional funds. We hope to virtually meet with the EDA within the next week to hopefully fund and finalize the details of this program. And per the last bullet in this category, successful applicants would receive a $2,000 grant and an amount that would allow us to maximize the number of city businesses receiving financial assistance. For a small business, $2,000 could be equivalent to one month's rent. With $100,000 of EDA funds then, we could fund fifty businesses at the $2,000 amount. Second, and to summarize program goals, funds are to be used to meet urgent business needs, including salaries, benefits, and business expenses. The program is intended to recognize the importance of our city, small businesses, to the city's success by quickly extending some quick financial relief to many businesses at an incredibly difficult time for them. Another program goal is to recognize the disproportionate economic damage done to specified business types, with priority consideration to businesses who are closed due to the Governor's Executive Order 53. We have also specified the types of businesses that would not be eligible for these funds, in some part relying on similar program qualifications in Fairfax County, but also reflecting the need to focus these funds on the types of businesses likely to be in the most desperate need of assistance. And lastly, how would it work? Process-wise, because we want to get assistance funds out quickly, we have tried to design a simple program wherein funds could be available to businesses quickly. We hope to have businesses apply within five days of an approved program announcement and hopefully be dispersing funds within one to two weeks. Secondly, we are focused on creating a simple, short application that we intend to offer online. We also plan to require something like an electronic signature on each application. As far as program criteria generally, we have tried to primarily include criteria that are verifiable by city staff, such as are they an eligible business type? Do they have a city business location? Do they have annual gross revenues of less than $500,000? Are they in good standing with city taxes and regulations as of February 2020? And possibly how long they've been in business in the city? In the way of a selection process, we have also put some thought into how to make the selection process as blind and as easy as it can be. So we're suggesting a randomized award selection process whereby applications come in, they are numbered, and then awardees are electronically selected by a service like random.org. And fifth, and finally, as you know, our neighboring jurisdictions are also standing up emergency loan or grant programs. So moving forward with this program will enable us to do something similar, albeit on a smaller scale. So that concludes my presentation. And with your permission, I'd like to ask if possibly EDA Chair Bob Young, our Chamber Executive Director Sally Cole, might have any comments they would like to add.
All right, thank you so much. That's very informative and we appreciate your good work and Ms. Hardy's as well. Did Mr. Young or Ms. Cole have, would like to join in the conversation?
This is Bob Young. I don't really have anything particular to add. Becky's done a very good job of summarizing what's been many days of discussion and going back and forth, trying to come up with something that's simple and above all, fast. Sally, do you have any comments? Guess not.
Yeah, I'll take that as a no. Okay, let's open it up to council comments and questions.
Actually, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do I have volume now?
You do, Ms. Cole.
Sorry about that.
Sure.
I just wanted to add that, I'm sorry?
I was just going to say, go ahead, please.
Becky has done an amazing job. Bob has really spent a gross amount of time working on this. And it's, you know, I think it's important for our business community to know that Falls Church cares because half of the reason that businesses come to Falls Church is because they want, they, they feel Falls Church is a community that cares. So for Falls Church to be able to turn that around and show them that it really does is more important now than ever. So thank you to Becky and Bob and everybody who's been working on this. It's important.
Thank you very much. Let's open it up to comments and questions from council. Do any council members have any comments, questions, et cetera?
Yeah, I've got a few.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse, why don't you start?
Thanks. Yeah, I just want to thank Bob- Yeah, I just want to thank Bob and Becky and Sally and Letty and others for putting a lot of work into this. I'd add an opportunity, I think along with other folks in economic development, to take a look at this, and generally am very supportive and agree. I know that, you know, $2,000 in a lot of cases may not be a lot of money, but for companies with gross receipts under $500,000, I think it's something that we can do, and if we've got the ability to do it and the flexibility within EDA funding, I think it's admirable. I don't know how I feel about the, the, the random selection necessarily. I feel like there's a lot of things. It could be first come, first served, and there may need to be some, some subjectivity into, well, I shouldn't say subjectivity, some objectivity related to need based for the first come, first served. So I ask you guys to think a little bit about that, or if anybody else has comments as to why we would go to random selection as opposed to first come, first served, I'd like to hear. But generally speaking, very much in support of this, and thank you for all the folks that put a ton of hard work into this. I love seeing us get scrappy and do what we can to help our local businesses, which truly are the fabric of, of our, of our community, business community here. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Other folks have any comments or questions?
This is Ms. Conley. I just want to say thank you to, to everyone who worked on this. This is really a very good step and an impressive program. Having sat in on the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting last week, it was, it was amazing to hear some of the stories that businesses, oh, sorry, businesses that we know and love are struggling in ways that we couldn't have imagined. So I'm really glad that we're going to try to do this. I hope that we can do more. And I would agree with Mr. Lichtenhouse, with the selection process, it's so hard to pick the right one. And I think with first come, first served, you end up with people who haven't heard about it, because they're not plugged into all the same things, getting less of an opportunity. But if you do randomize, then you don't have need. So I know we want to make it as quick and easy as possible, but I'm wondering if there is a way to take a look at the selection process a little more and, and see if there's a way to make sure it gets to the people who need it the most.
All right, thank you, Ms. Conley. Are there other folks who would like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Or ask a question? Yes, Ms. Hardy?
Sorry, I've had some technical issues. I've signed on from another computer. So yes, thank you for the group for pulling this together really quickly. I think, speaking of scrappy, I think I'm just really impressed how nimble we've been in the past couple of days in trying to put something together. My, one of the things that I found in my research is actually, I think one of our neighboring jurisdictions actually has a blind review. So I was actually a fan of using that so that we can anonymize the requests that come in, so we can meet hopefully the highest needs and kind of achieve what you get from either the random lottery or first come, first served. So if possible, I'd still like for us to think about that approach, doing some sort of blind review with a panel, hopefully still be able to do it quickly, but meeting as many business needs as possible. The second question I had is, just a general thought is, I think the real, big intent of this program is to make sure that we focus on those independent small businesses with those physical locations, as Becky has said. I'd also really want to make sure that we figure out who is missed by the federal money. So who is falling through the cracks and not either eligible or not getting to the PPP? I know that since the money for now has stopped at the federal level, if we can help be a bridge until the next round of money comes, I think that would be helpful too.
This is great feedback, everyone. Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions?
May I ask a couple?
Of course, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hard work that's been done on this. I count at least three votes for it already, so make mine the fourth. Just a couple of process questions. Is the information that is, you know, factored into our decisions here, is it public information? In other words, are, are people going to know which businesses applied and what their net revenue was? Some of that information, you know, that we get out of the Commissioner's office is not usually provided to just anybody. So I just wondered, just make sure the companies, the businesses that are going to apply realize that there may be some more, you know, public transparency to this than, which I think is good, than maybe they might be used to. And second, so the EDA has to vote on this, which speaks to when they can get together to, to do a vote? Is that thought to be, hoped to be early next week, assuming that the General Assembly passes the, the meetings measure that has been discussed? Are we looking at the EDA trying to work on this early next week?
Phil, I, Mr. Duncan, I believe we were hoping that after Wednesday, we could schedule a meeting and perhaps, you know, notice it for three days and then possibly have the EDA meet on Monday, I think is what I last heard was most optimistic.
Okay, that's good. And is the information that businesses are going to provide going to be available to the public, or is it behind some sort of, you know, privacy blind?
What I had anticipated, and we need to work on this more, was to work with Tom to come up with a list of the business names and addresses only, where they would only provide that information for businesses that gross less than $500,000 a year. So we wouldn't see the gross receipts numbers, for instance. And we, city staff exclusively would make sure that the applicants are eligible based on the criteria.
Okay, so if anybody in the public had any question about who applied, presumably the names that would be in the running would either be businesses that are under $500,000, and anybody who wasn't in the running either didn't apply or was over $500,000 by, by sort of exclusion.
I had hoped to have a number of potential eligible businesses for you tonight, but we just, we didn't have time to quite wrap that up. It's, it's a big number, though. And if we're only funding 50 of them, that's not going to go very far, that $100,000.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, as that's, as was said earlier, we need to, I think, show that we care, and just getting into it, you know, will help us gauge the depth of the, of the problem. We perceive that it's pretty deep, and I have a feeling this will probably show to some degree how deep it is.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may make a comment, Bob Young?
Of course, Mr. Young.
To answer the question that came up about how many of our businesses have been able to get PPP or EIDL money, we're in touch with many, many folks, business folks in the city, including many of our tenants. I would guess, and it's only a guess, that perhaps 10, maybe 20% of our businesses, but probably closer to 10% have been able to obtain any money at all. The fact of the matter is that most of our businesses have accounts with either Wells Fargo or Bank of America, and most of you probably know that those banks made the decision to award money, you know, instead of first come, first served, it was who has the biggest loan, so that we can make our 5% more easily. So I can't tell you the number, but it's many. Tenants who applied the first or second day, these businesses were, their applications were accepted, and they received no money. You know, eventually they got a notice, an email that said, "Sorry, we ran out of money, too bad." So we're hoping that we can help individual businesses, and we're in touch with a lot of them, to go to other banks or otherwise be eligible for the next tranche of money that comes, becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Young. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder. So as I said a few minutes ago, and I, this is a theme that I want to stay with, that the real way to help our businesses is to get our economy back and moving, that, that government can only do so much, and even the federal government that prints money has shown that it's not able to print enough to deal with the circumstances of the shutdown that we've seen. So I think our number one objective, in addition to taking care of the public health as necessary, and I mean as necessary as opposed to what some might desire, is to get our economy up and running. So let me make that point. This is at best a stopgap. Secondly, there is another tranche of federal money coming, and that may be voted on as early as this week. So hopefully our program can be timed to take account of that, of that tranche. Second thing I want to ask is, there's some vague references to businesses not deemed essential. Can, can the folks there that have worked on this program give me some examples of the kinds of businesses that we're talking about assisting with this program? And I have a few more questions.
Becky, do you want to?
Sure. It's mostly ground floor commercial users, like restaurants and nail salons, retail sales, like Doodle Hopper that were affected. Yeah, just think in terms of the businesses up and down West Broad, Florists, if, you know, those kinds of businesses, service and retail sales as well, where they're paying the highest rents in the city because they're paying triple net, and they're not able... Well, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, but it, and it's the hair salons and the nail salons and the massage therapists, those folks are hit the hardest.
And the fitness places, lots of fitness places.
Okay, that's helpful. Second point is, is we know the EDA money is ultimately taxpayer money, so my question is, what if the need is for $200,000 or $500,000 or for a million? What are, what are we really agreeing to tonight? And is there a danger that we're creating expectations that we can't meet, considering we've just had a budgetary discussion where we're not, at least it's been proposed, able to do things that our citizens have wanted and expected to be done for years? So my question is, what are we really agreeing to tonight? Is it $100,000 absolute limit? Is it going to be more? If so, how much? And has anyone looked at, is this really the best expenditure in the long term at a much higher level than $100,000? So I'm assuming, in response to my question, that we're talking about $100,000, period. Is that right?
Bob, do you want to jump into that, or do you want me to? The intent is to do it for the $100,000, but the EDA has 1.3 million roughly in the fund that we're going to shift into this purpose. I, you know, we haven't had a meeting with them, so I can't say how favorable they will be to 100 or even 500,000, so it kind of remains to be seen.
So you're suggesting that this program could grow to 1.3 million?
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying it's, it's within the realm of possibility. If everybody came back and said, you know, this was a fantastic success, but we need to do more, I, it could be considered, but I'm, I don't believe it would go that way.
So we're potentially agreeing tonight to spend $1.3 million, where we're saying to neighbor, to our neighborhoods, we're not going to do neighborhood traffic calming because things are too tight, or we're not going to do stormwater even though you were planning to have it and your house was flooded with sewer water the last time we had a major significant rainfall. I mean, I can agree to something that expresses our support for our local businesses, but again, the way to really support them is to get our economy up and running. So when you're talking about $1.3 million, that's nothing that I'm prepared to sign off on tonight.
No, I, I appreciate that. Actually, our intent in coming to you all tonight was to get input on exactly this kind of aspect of the program. You know, how much...
I'll tell you right now that, I'm sorry, Becky.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, our, yeah, our, our businesses, you, let's get back to the economy, sure, but our businesses are more worried about their clients, their customers, and their health than they are about, you know, getting the economy back on schedule. They're, they're worried about their employees, they're worried about everything else. They're, to push, I, I, maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding Council Member Snyder's comments, but to push some kind of economic, you know, push it faster than it has to be is not what our businesses want. They want their clients to be healthy, they want to be firm, and they want to be, you know, they want to be, they want help, but they, I'm sorry that I'm like struggling here, but it just, I'm, I'm...
Sure.
They want help, but they want, first and foremost, their clients to be healthy and whole.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree with you more. So my question for the mayor is, what, what are we talking about tonight? Are we talking about a $100,000 program, or are we talking about a $1.3 million program?
Well, I would say, I, I think we're talking about everything that the EDA is bringing to us tonight, but I would suggest for purposes of framing this discussion as input to the EDA, that you consider this proposal or project as $100,000 as a, as a starting point, and if it, it looks like you want to expand it beyond that, you come back and let us know how the proposal is working, how the project's working, and seek additional input from us to exceed that amount. It'd be my suggestion.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor? It's Bob Young?
Yes, of course.
I want to try to be very, very clear. This program was originally proposed, it seems like years ago, but it was probably three or four days, at $250,000, which I think personally is the appropriate amount. In consultation with the City Manager's Office and other people, it was decided, let's start it at $100,000. We will likely get many more applications than we can fulfill. That will give us a database to be able to see whether it needs to be expanded, and if so, is 150 or 200 or 250 perhaps the right number. I personally don't envision this ever going above the $250,000 number. I certainly don't envision it being 1.3 million or anything remotely approaching that number. I want to keep, ask everyone to keep in mind that while we have consulted with many members of the Economic Development Authority, we haven't even done any kind of a straw poll. I believe the large majority would be in favor of it, but that remains to be seen. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. My goal as the chair is $250,000 down the road, but that's going to be up to the Economic Development Authority members to determine, obviously in consultation, as has just been suggested, let's see how it goes with the first tranche, and then we can come back to consult with council on where, if anywhere, we go from there.
All right, thank you. Are there other comments or questions?
I did have one more.
Yes.
So I agree with everything that was said. I think for now, we're just requesting, the EDA is requesting us to endorse their program at $100,000, but I think it certainly can discuss what the need and demand is as it gets launched. I think this underscores the importance of kind of getting the EDA and other boards and commissions to be up and running and to meet, because I do think that it'd be valuable for them, one, not only to talk about a program like this, but two, other low cost or no cost ways for us to help the business community along. I know we did zoning things last week by council emergency action, but there may be other creative ideas out there that I want to make sure boards and commissions, especially ones like the EDA that's focused on business recovery, can meet to actually talk about things that can do help that doesn't come with a price tag.
All right, thank you. Are there other comments or questions? Okay, well, it sounds like then that, that is what the input you're receiving, Bob, Sally and Becky, is that, you know, go forward with this program at the $100,000 mark and then report back to us and, and tell us, you know, how, how much interest there is and your recommendations for going further beyond that, if, if any. Does that sound like a plan for everyone?
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Look, let, let me just add, this is Dave Snyder, that I think, I think Bob Young's approach here is a very solid one, and I think I totally agree with starting with the $100,000. I have a little bit of flex, personal, a little flexibility beyond that, but certainly not at, at the maximum amount that was talked about at 1.3 million, nowhere near. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for all the good work you're doing on behalf of our local business community. We greatly appreciate it.
Sure.
Before we break up then this evening, is there any other further discussion about any topic that hasn't been raised that relates to the emergency or the continuity of government? All right, yes, Mr. Duncan, is that you?
Well, Becky, maybe you're still within earshot. The very helpful to-go website that you all... all put up, which lists the restaurants that have to-go and carryout options now, I'm not sure, did I read that the State Theater has also started a to-go enterprise, a carryout enterprise? Anyway, I'm looking at that website now, it says it was last updated on April 8th. Just want to make sure that whatever the, maybe the State Theater hasn't informed you officially, but want to make sure that whatever the very latest information is about to-go options is on that website, because I find myself looking at it pretty often, and I expect others do too, it'd be good for it to reflect the very latest.
Great. Thank you. We will get it updated, and if anybody sees anything else that they think needs updated, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Becky, can I add one thing too?
Sure.
I think Allen, or Eden Center posted on their Facebook page last night, a number of businesses that are open, but some of the businesses that the city website has listed as open are now closed. So because Eden Center's so volatile, it might be good just to have a link directly to the Eden Center site.
Good idea.
So that they can keep track of all those businesses that are up and down.
Yep, good idea. Thank you.
All right, are there any other comments or questions before we adjourn?
Mayor Tarter, this is Wyatt, just one note, we're, just to really thank Becky. Becky's been one of our shining stars through this whole crisis, and she's been just so creative and thoughtful and trying to figure out ways to help our business community, and just want to really thank her for that and celebrate that work. We've got a long ways to go, but it's been so helpful.
Thank you, Wyatt.
Yes, thank you all. I think the whole community's got a whole lot of shining stars right now.
Absolutely.
A whole lot of folks are pulling together, so that's greatly appreciated. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Well, the agenda says that we would talk about council schedule. I assume that's up in the air to some degree, depending on what happens in Richmond on Wednesday, but we would expect to hear from the attorney and the manager and all the important people on Thursday about what, what would the nature of our Monday meeting be next? Is that right?
Yes, hope, yeah, my mic's on. Yes, hopefully we'll have some new and additional information we can share with everyone, and as soon as we, we have that, we will share it, and as we're able to expand our agenda to other pressing items, then we will do so.
And just to, on that point, on the 27th, what the request of council will be is first reading on the FY21 budget, knowing that there'll be public hearings and work sessions to follow, as there always is in the budget process through till Tuesday, May 26th.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shields. Is there any other business that folks want to conduct before we adjourn?
Wyatt, I had one more question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think a citizen asked me, seeing how other communities were doing PPE drives, whether Falls Church in particular was in need of any PPEs, whether we were collecting any for ourselves or for our local hospitals and healthcare facilities.
We, we have been collecting them. We haven't had a real loud drive for it, but let me talk with our team about that in terms of just helping the healthcare workers in our region and lending our efforts to that. I would like to just note, we've had wonderful volunteers who have donated to the city masks, and, and we will publicize those who have been so generous, either with their own sort of creativity at home, and some businesses have donated them as well. And, and so we want to celebrate that. And those are being used by our police department and other Public Works employees, or essential employees who are, who are working.
All right, is there anything else?
Before I move to adjourn here, I'm struck by how well we're all working together. The mark of a good team is, not how well they do in good times, but how they pull together and reinforce each other when times aren't so good. And so, first of all, kudos to us, but moreover, to all the great work that our tremendous staff is doing. Thank you all so much. And with that, I'll move to adjourn.
All right, let's go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all for coming out this evening virtually, and look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you.